Good afternoon. And welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission's November 5th, 2015 meeting. Please note that today's meeting is being livestreamed on the ncpc.gov website. We do have a quorum, and so we will proceed per the agenda that's been publicly advertised. Agenda item number one is the report of the chairman. And I'll note just a couple of things. One, as you see that today's November agenda is short and is going to be efficient. However, next month's agenda is going to be extensive. We have a number of interesting and some very important items to come before us, so please know that next month could be a little -- will be a little longer than today's. Second, yesterday, we had an extraordinary field trip where many members of the commission and staff and other interested parties joined together and did about an hour-and-a-half-long hard-hat tour of the African-American History and Culture Museum, which is going to be the newest museum on the Mall as part of the Smithsonian Institution. It's a fabulously designed facility, and it's going to be an extraordinary museum when it is opened in roughly a year's time, I guess. It's going to be a great addition to Smithsonian, a great addition to the Mall, and certainly a great commemorative addition outlining, commemorating African-American culture and history in this country and their efforts to help build this country, and how they are much the fabric, an important part of the fabric of this country. So we all look very forward to that happy day when we cut a ribbon. Agenda item number two is the report of the executive director, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon. I'm pleased to announce that we've reached a major milestone on our Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative. Last month, we brought in Sasaki Associates and H&amp;R economic advisors to help our inter-agency team flesh out economic and urban design framework strategies for Pennsylvania Avenue. So I'd like to ask our project manager, Sarah Ridgely, to give the commission a brief update. And also, as you may notice, her screen has shrunk significantly. We have had some AV equipment problems, so we apologize for that.
Thank you, Director Acosta, and good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Sarah Ridgely, and I'm an urban planner in the Physical Planning Division and also project manager for the Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative. So I'm here today to update you on the progress of our project. It's been quite a few months since we last met. We were here in July 2014 for an update to the commission, and we were just beginning the initiative at that point. So I'd like to take a few minutes to provide an update on our work since then and outline the next steps as we head towards an update to the Pennsylvania Avenue Plan. After recognizing that Pennsylvania Avenue was not meeting the needs of our 21st-century capital, NCPC began working with federal and local partners in 2014 to begin discussing the future potential of this very significant street. So in 2014, we kicked off the initiative with a series of meetings with our key federal and local partners, many of which are here today, and we hosted a public meeting in July of 2014. And it really started to talk about the vision and character that we want the avenue to possess in the next 20 years. We also hosted a number of focus groups with key stakeholders, ranging from property managers to those who manage facilities on the GSA side of the street, to everyday people that walk up and down the avenue. Last but not least, in 2014, we hosted the Residents-to-Presidents event. It was a speaker series event at the museum. We had speakers come to discuss defining characteristics and themes that we could potentially use for the avenue, and also talked a little bit about some different urban design and programming trends that could set the avenue apart from other places in Washington and the nation, and even internationally. It was a very fun event. And in 2015, we put together an executive committee of, again, many of the agencies that sit here at the commission. They include ourselves, NCPC, and Director Acosta represents us there. The General Services Administration, which is represented by Commissioner Wright, as well as Tony Acosta. We also have the National Park Service, Commissioner May, as well as the new superintendent, Bietzke, is sitting for the National Park Service. And then we also have the district. So Andrew Trueblood from the Deputy Mayor's Office for Planning and Economic Development sits with us, as well as Greer Gillis from the District Department of Transportation. And so the executive committee is really there to provide a leadership role. They're the forum for inter-agency coordination on this project, and they make decisions that are informed by a number of stakeholders, subcommittees, consultants, as well as public input. And ultimately, they will be the ones that guide the update to the Pennsylvania Avenue Plan. The executive committee's worked on a number of projects over the past year. We've done an inventory of physical conditions along the avenue, as well as an evaluation and analysis of the PADC plan, which many of you are familiar with. It was developed in 1974 originally and is in need of an update. And then last but not least, we scoped a project that we're working on now to develop economic and urban design strategies for the avenue. And this is really the exciting part of the project that we're thrilled to be getting up and running at this point. We are working with Sasaki Associates and H&amp;RNA. We bid out that project over the summer and awarded the contract in September, and we're working with them on the first major phase of this initiative. And this is where we're developing economic and urban design strategies that will ultimately frame this update to the '74 Pennsylvania Avenue Plan. So the consultants will be working in the coming months with our executive committee to study these economic and physical conditions on the avenue. And so first, they're going to examine the current and projected real estate market conditions. This is very important to set the stage. You know, we're going to look at how Pennsylvania Avenue is impacted by development downtown in these competing areas, but also in other competing markets in the city and the region. So from there, we'll develop some economic strategies to consider how to competitively position the avenue and find a way to best meet the local and national economic needs. And so the next piece of this is urban design-related. And so we're going to examine more of the character and the role that the avenue plays, both locally and nationally. But we're also looking at ways to increase the daily, the day-to-day, use on the avenue, too. We're going to look at items like land use, activity mix, and possibly some physical changes to the actual right-of-way. This might consider reallocating space for pedestrians, bikes, cars, and transit. So the results of this work will provide the executive committee with a framework to guide those future decisions to kind of look at the physical and operational improvements on the avenue that are needed, to make sure, again, that this represents the 21st-century capital that we all know and love. One other important point is we will be having a public workshop in the spring of 2016 to obtain feedback on the preliminary findings. So last but not least, to that other, the last bullet here, we are also working on some near-term improvements for the avenue related to permitting and maintenance, so more to come on that. So just to close, Pennsylvania Avenue, it is one of the most recognized streets in the nation, if not in the world, because of its ceremonial and its symbolic role, something that, you know, we all know this. And there's also one particular person that lives just to the west of us. It also makes us a very important place. There's no doubt that the avenue works really well at the grand scale. The proportions of the avenue, the dramatic view, the strong tree canopy, all of this frames an iconic vista that we all know and love. But the avenue is also an important city street, and this is where people live and work every day. And at this everyday scale, it's not working quite as well. We know that we can do more to celebrate the avenue's important national image, but also make sure that this is a fun and exciting place to experience on a day-to-day basis. So really, the purpose of our initiative is to focus on balancing these two things. We know that it needs to continue to play that national role, but we also want it to be just a fantastic place to, you know, pop out of your office and go experience after work. So at this juncture, that's our big challenge, is making sure that it works at both scales. We also need to balance out economic vitality. We need to figure out the regulatory hurdles we need to overcome. There are also jurisdictional and fiscal barriers that are posing ongoing issues here. So we need to address all of that as part of this initiative. And I think that with that work, with our first step here with the economic and urban design strategies, we're headed towards a street that will be fantastic for everybody. It will have all the components that we all want to see there today. So NCPC looks forward to working with our partners on this once-in-a-generation opportunity. We will be back to the commission very soon to update you on the progress of our first phase. And at this time, I'd like to thank you for your time and answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Sarah? It's an exciting project. It's going to be historic, obviously. Great. Thank you very much. Agenda item number three is an update from Legislative Council. Ms. Skyler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing to report this month.
Agenda item number four is the consent calendar, and we have three items. 4A. Item 4A is the Tour Bridge Modernization Project at the Bureau of Engraving and Printing. Item 4B is the Surface Parking Lots at the National Intelligence Geospatial Agency at Fort Belvoir. And last, item 4C is the Mount Weather Emergency Operations Center Communication Tower Installation Antenna Project for FEMA in Bluemont, Virginia. Are there any questions on the consent calendar about any of the, any or all of the items? Hearing none, is there a motion on the consent calendar? It's been moved by Ms. White and seconded by Mr. Dixon. All in favor of the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, no. Thank you. Then we're down to our only two really substantive items today. The first is agenda item number 5A, is comments on the site selection for the FDR prayer plaque. Ms. Spigell.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. The National Park Service, on behalf of the Friends of the World War II Memorial, has submitted proposed sites for the Franklin D. Roosevelt prayer plaque for your review and comment. In June of 2014, Congress passed Public Law 113-123, which directs the Secretary of the Interior to install a suitable plaque or inscription within the area of the World War II Memorial with the words that Franklin D. Roosevelt prayed on D-Day. As you know, the World War II Memorial was constructed in 2004 and honors the 16 million who served in the U.S. Armed Forces during the Second World War. D-Day, one of the deadliest days of the war, launched the Allied invasion in an effort to liberate mainland Europe from Nazi control. The night before, Americans began hearing news reports of a planned invasion. They clustered around radios in offices, factories, and homes, listening to news from across the Atlantic. President Roosevelt sought to calm an anxious nation as tens of thousands of American and Allied forces besieged the coast of Normandy. Roosevelt's Prayer with the Nation on D-Day, June 6, 1944, is roughly 500 words in length and was spoken in a slow and deliberate cadence as the nation contemplated the day of the invasion. The words of the prayer are shown to the left of the slide. For the words to be legible, the plaque or inscription area will require 10 to 12 square feet, approximately 2 feet by 5 feet or 3 feet by 4 feet in dimension. The National Park Service has provided a mock-up of the plaque at the corner of the room to provide a sense of scale. To provide a brief process overview, Congress authorized the installation of President Roosevelt's Prayer with Public Law 113-123. The law specifies that the plaque or inscription shall be within the area of the World War II Memorial. The law also states that the Commemorative Works Act, or CWA, applies to the site selection and design of the plaque. The CWA is a federal law that guides the memorial's process in DC, and it provides some guiding criteria for site selection, which are helpful for this project, that include situating the work in surroundings that are relevant, locating the work so that it does not interfere with an existing commemorative work, and locating the work while protecting open space, existing public use, and cultural and natural resources. At this point in the process, CFA and the National Capitol Memorial Advisory Commission, or NICMAC, and NCPC provide agency consultation on potential sites within the World War II Memorial. NICMAC has an advisory role on commemorative works within DC. CFA and NCPC have approval authority. CFA and NICMAC have already reviewed and commented on the alternative sites. After our commission comments, the applicants will develop designs within the preferred site. In the future, the site and design will return to our commission for combined preliminary final approval. Construction and maintenance of the final design will be the responsibility of the Park Service. Working in conjunction with Ombon Sweden Landscape Architects, the National Park Service and Friends of the World War II Memorial developed a list of criteria to guide in the evaluation and selection of a site for the prayer plaque. These criteria parallel the site selection guidance found within the CWA, but provide a bit more detail. The applicant's criteria are shown on the slide. Particularly important are the criteria for filtered views to the site from the National Mall, ease of ABAAS accessibility, which are GSA's universal access standards, proximity to relevant D-Day subject material, and contemplative character. Taken together, the CWA guidance and applicant selection criteria offer sound standards for evaluating the site alternatives. Locating the prayer in a contemplative space with ease of accessibility will be critical to the successful function of this element and to accommodating the needs of the World War II visitor population. This photo from a site visit shows a tour group of 80 veterans from World War II and the Korean and Vietnam Wars visiting from the state of Oklahoma. The World War II Memorial is among the top visitor destinations in the National Mall. It occupies roughly seven acres, two-thirds of which are landscape features, including the Circle of Remembrance to the north. The memorial's primary precinct includes a restored, original Olmsted Rainbow Pool encompassed by an expansive plaza. The two victory arches mark the north and south ends of the plaza, named for the Atlantic and Pacific war fronts. At the center, the Freedom Wall holds 4,000 gold stars, each representing 100,000 Americans who gave their lives during the war. The applicant has considered four potential sites for the location of the plaque, for orientation. North is to the right on the site plan. Relevant subject material is located on the northern side of the ellipse and includes the Atlantic Arch and the Eisenhower D-Day inscription. The four sites include Site A, the Circle of Remembrance, Site B, the path edge northeast of the Atlantic Memorial Arch, Site C, the ceremonial entrance, and Site D, the path edge northwest of the information station. I'll walk through each of the sites and provide staff's analysis. Site A, the Circle of Remembrance, was the only part of the World War II Memorial designed as a discreet landscape. Intended to be a quiet and intimate space, much like a side chapel in a cathedral, it consists of a 38-foot diameter circle situated on a knoll between Constitution Gardens and the World War II primary precinct. The circle is encompassed by a 2-foot-tall fieldstone wall, the interior of which is lined with a continuous set of wood and cast-iron frame benches. A circular planter containing shrubs and annuals occupies the center of the circle. Azaleas and other white flowering plants symbolizing peace in this well-shaded space, which offer unexpected views to both the Washington Monument and Constitution Gardens. The site is in close proximity to the Atlantic Arch and Eisenhower's D-Day inscription, and it is located in a space unto itself, off a pathway flanking the outside northern edge of the primary precinct. The adjacent pathway connections allow for easy access from the Atlantic Arch. NPS has indicated in their Section 106 initiation letter that the Circle of Remembrance is their preferred site. CFA and NICMAC have commented favorably on the site as well. The applicant has offered more detail for this site with regard to the exact placement of the plaque or inscription within the Circle of Remembrance, and the applicant has identified four distinct options. Option 1, replacing existing wood benches and possibly the fieldstone wall with granite benches to match those in the primary memorial precinct. The D-Day prayer could be sited in the center of the bank of benches, and in order to protect views from Constitution Gardens, the benches and D-Day prayer could be no taller than the existing fieldstone wall. Option 2, the D-Day prayer could be sited within the central planter. Option 3, the D-Day prayer could be within the planter at the entrance to Memorial Circle. And option 4, the D-Day prayer could be sited on the paving area at the entrance to Memorial Circle. Site A meets all five of the CWA criteria and all 10 of the applicant's site selection criteria. The Circle of Remembrance holds the most promise for the location of the prayer plaque. The intimate garden setting is an ideal place for contemplation and peaceful reflection. It has a different feel and palette from the rest of the memorial and is similar to Constitution Gardens. The space can also accommodate smaller groups of 30 to 50 people away from the bustling crowds in the main plaza. As was indicated in Option 1 of the applicant's submission, integrating the inscription within a bank of granite benches could provide a means to tie the material palette more closely to the memorial's primary precinct. Options 2 and 3 could present opportunities to improve and update the planter beds. If this option were selected, proper maintenance of plantings would be necessary to ensure visibility of the plaque. Option 4, integrating the inscription into paving could present problems with visibility of the prayer and may not be an appropriate placement given the subject material. Site B, the path edge northeast of the Atlantic Memorial Arch, is a point along a 16-foot-wide scored concrete path. The site does not offer a sense of enclosure, so it would be essential to add vegetative screening. Site B is in close proximity to the Atlantic Arch and Eisenhower D-Day inscription. The site does not offer a space from which to view the plaque as there are no benches or resting areas adjacent. Site B meets four of the five CWA criteria and six of the 10 applicant criteria. The exposed site does not meet the applicant's criteria for filtered views and limited disturbance to existing mature tree roots. The site is a minor point along a greater axial pedestrian connection. Its linear orientation does not lend itself to taking in the plaque while en route. Site C, the ceremonial entrance, is located within the top of a set of wide terrace lawn panels leading down to the central plaza space. The panels located on the Mall's central east-west axis are currently used as an assembly space. The area accommodates 2,000 seated and 4,000 standing. The site is well-utilized. In 2014, it accommodated 309 permanent events. While further from the Atlantic Arch and Eisenhower's D-Day inscriptions than Sites A or B, Site C is positioned in close proximity to bar relief panels that depict D-Day's Normandy beach landing and two marker stones at the end of each ramp that are inscribed with quotes by President Roosevelt. Site C has several accessibility problems located along the busy 17th Street sidewalk and within one of the primary assembly spaces of the memorial. The site is bustling with pedestrian activity. Additionally, the grass material within the top panel would need to be paved in order to provide accessibility. So Site C meets two of the five CWA criteria and only two of the 10 applicant criteria. Site C is not a suitable location for the prayer plaque. The ceremonial entrance is located along the Mall's center line, which symbolically connects the Washington Monument and Lincoln Memorial. The site's exposed nature and use as an assembly space is in conflict with the contemplative character intended for the prayer. Additionally, locating the plaque within the top lawn panel would compete with the existing granite announcement stone pictured here. Site D, the path edge northwest of the information station, is a point along an 8-foot-wide scored concrete path. The site offers some sense of enclosure, but additional vegetative screening could be added. Of the four sites, Site D is located furthest from existing relevant subject material. The proposed location is off a path flanking the southern outside edge of the memorial's primary precinct. The adjacent pathway connections allow for easy access from the Pacific Arch and from the information station and bus drop-off area. Currently, there are two benches adjacent to the path from which to view the prayer plaque. Site D meets four of the five CWA criteria and eight of the 10 applicant criteria. The site does not meet the CWA and applicant criteria for proximity to relevant subject material. While conveniently located near the bus drop-off area and information station, the site incurs considerable ambient noise coming from nearby buses and information station activities. Overall, the environment does not support the contemplative character intended for the prayer. So in summary, when evaluating the four sites against the CWA criteria for site selection, Site A best meets those criteria. Likewise, when evaluating sites against the applicant's site selection criteria, again, Site A best meets all the desired criteria. Therefore, it is the executive director's recommendation that the commission support selecting Site A, the Circle of Remembrance, as the preferred location for the FDR prayer plaque or inscription, based on its contemplative character, close proximity to existing thematically-relevant memorial elements, and coordination with existing circulation patterns. The commission recommends that the sponsor develop a range of alternative designs within the area of the Circle of Remembrance to include integrating the inscription with landscape furnishing elements, such as retaining walls or benches, as well as standalone elements. The design should protect existing view sheds to the National Mall and should be installed in a manner that is complementary in scale and material to the Circle of Remembrance. The commission does not support Site C due to its location along the center line of the Mall and its current use as an outdoor assembly space. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions. The National Park Service and Friends of the World War II Memorial are here as well.
Good. Thank you very much. Other questions for Ms. Spigell? Not? Mr. May, do you have anything to add? I'm sorry, there's a question, please.
I've been to the site a couple of times, probably more than that now, and I don't think I've ever seen that Circle of Remembrance area. I just never noticed it. Is there any signs there now? And if not, would there be some kind of description of where this is and to get folks' attention to know that it exists?
Right, there, to my knowledge, there are not signs there. It was included in the original landscape design that Ombon Sweden Landscape Architects did for the World War II Memorial, but I even asked one of the information attendants, and they were at a loss for where it was or that it was actually there. So something extra is needed, I think.
Yeah, I think it's one of those features that was, you know, had a name in the design stage but didn't have a specific function in the day-to-day operation of the memorial. So it wasn't really called out as a place to be, but, you know, we've obviously been very aware that it was there and it was, I think it was important to the Park Service during the design process for that space to be there. But I do imagine that this will become a destination for people, and we'll need to make sure that people know where to find it.
Yeah, I understand the desire to want to separate it a little bit so there's space together, and it's a quieter area, but at the same time, I don't want to hide it.
I think we feel the same way, and it is a bit of a struggle because, you know, we did look very seriously at some of these sites, and I can't say that I completely agree with the analysis that was done. I think, you know, Site D had more promise than NCPC has concluded it has. But nonetheless, I think that the consensus does seem to be building around Site A, and I would qualify that only to say that it will depend on how it is designed there as well. It's an important and a bit tricky design task to integrate a plaque the size, at least the size of that, into that particular location.
Other comments or questions?
I guess I just need a little guidance here. Once we do a memorial, is there any, you know, is it ever final, or do we just keep adding it? How's that work?
Well, this particular one is a direction from law.
Okay.
That's the easy answer on this one.
Right. I would only add that generally speaking, when proposals are made to add things to memorials, it is usually regarded as being inconsistent with the Commemorative Works Act, and when given the opportunity to testify to the Congress, to that effect, the National Park Service, I'm sorry, the Department of the Interior will generally testify that this is, in addition, that, you know, that is inconsistent with the Commemorative Works Act. In this particular case, there was an opportunity to testify. I think what we actually said is that we had concerns about inconsistency with the memorial. I think what we actually said is that we had concerns about inconsistency with the Commemorative Works Act. So, I mean, I think, you know, we're very sensitive to that. We try to make sure that any, that we don't wind up with a lot of add-ons to existing memorials. That being said, we have added on several things at the Vietnam Veterans Memorial and we added the Martin Luther King Speech plaque at Lincoln, so things do get added on at the direction of the Congress.
I only, you know, I think the way it works is if you have a constituency, you have an audience, have an audience, you can get legislation. And I think that's responsive and I support that, but, I mean, we could, this could continue for quite a while and...
You know, I will only say that on certain occasions, when the department has taken a position in opposition to certain additions, that the Congress agreed with the concerns that we had. So it has happened.
Thank you, Bea.
Ms. Roy?
Short thing, I promise. I would just like, don't laugh, I would just like to appeal to whoever makes these decisions that when we do it, I said the same thing at Nick Mack, but just, it bears repeating, it's very hard to figure out where this thing ought to go without knowing what it's going to look like. And I would, I would urge that if we are in the business of adding, again, that we marry up the process of site selection and design so that we're not doing one in isolation. Just saying.
And I don't think this is being done in isolation. The, we did enough examination of what it's likely to be to know, to have some sense of the size of it, but I think that if we find that we can't, if we can't find a viable design to work in that location, then we'll wind up looking at other locations. So it's, you know, the decision of this commission won't happen until we have site and design both together. The action before today is not an approval per se of site. So, I mean, in effect, this is integrated. And I think we're all, I think, Park Service and NCPC are both intent on trying to reintegrate the site selection and design process in the way we establish the memorials.
Ms. White?
I had a similar reaction. I was trying to evaluate the sites given that we don't know what it looks like, so I appreciate that, that's going to be married up. And I understand the contemplative nature, so for me, while I can understand your point about site D, I think the preferred one just works better and your thoughtful observation about it sort of hidden away, people don't really perceive it. It's a real challenge for something like this that you don't want it in a busy spot.
Well, but the flip side is if it's beautifully designed, it'll become an activated part of the memorial that has previously been ignored. It's just, there's a whole lot of things that might be done through a design process that we haven't thought of because it doesn't necessarily have to be a big bronze plaque, right?
It starts somewhere. Yeah, it's a tough, like, it's a chicken and egg, but it's nice to think about the space and then figure out what it's going to look like.
I would only say that we also see this as an opportunity to make something more substantial out of the Circle of Remembrance. So we're excited that it has that potential. As for the, you know, the direction we have from the Congress is those words on a plaque. And so we have significant flexibility, I think, in exactly how we do that, but we know that it's got to be at least this size and it has to be something you can call a
Sensing no further comments or questions, the question before us is the approval of comments on the selection of site A as the location for the FDR prayer plaque.
I would move the executive director's recommendation.
It's been moved and, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, the EDR, as before you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No? Passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's the only action item on the agenda. The last item on the agenda is what I believe is a very important information presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. The General Services Administration is here today to provide an information presentation on the Potomac Hill Campus Master Plan. I'm going to provide a brief introduction before I turn the presentation over to Stephanie Liedem, who is GSA's project manager for the master plan. So just to orient you to the site, Potomac Hill, the campus is located north of the National Mall and south of the Foggy Bottom neighborhood. The Kennedy Center is located to the west and the Department of State Headquarters, the Harry S Truman Building, is located to the east. On the south is the U.S. Institute of Peace Headquarters, and they also have control of Buildings Six and Seven at the Potomac Annex. So here you can see a closer look at the campus. GSA is working on this master plan with the Department of State to guide the development of the campus as it moves into the future. Ultimately, the campus will be occupied by Department of State employees. Just to remind you, recent projects that the commission has reviewed include the perimeter security project at the Harry S Truman Building last month and then the rehabilitation of Buildings Six and Seven by the United States Institute of Peace. This aerial photo gives you an idea of how the buildings sit up on a hill and also the general scale and character of the campus. The east side of the campus in this location developed first in the mid-nineteenth century around the Old Naval Observatory, which is this building here. This portion of the campus is generally characterized by small-scale buildings, typically two to three stories in height, and they're unified by their architectural style as classical revival buildings. The west side of the campus in this location developed later in the early part of the twentieth century and housed what was the predecessor to NIH and also later the Central Intelligence Agency first had their home here. So in this image, you just see essentially the two adjoining federally owned parcels. The Potomac Annex was on the east side of the campus and then the Navy Hill portion here on the west. GSA recently drafted, it's a historic district and recently drafted a national register nomination for the Old Naval Observatory Historic District, which encompasses this entire campus. They've also, GSA has been using the Section 106 consultation process to develop and refine the alternatives that they will continue to analyze through the NEPA process as the project moves forward. GSA is here today to get the commission's feedback and early input on the alternatives as they continue to work on the master plan, and we anticipate that the master plan will be coming before the commission in 2016 as a draft and then for final review in early 2017. And so with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Stephanie Liedem to continue.
Ms. Liedem, welcome.
Good afternoon. My name's Stephanie Liedem. Thank you, Jennifer, by the way, and the commission for having us today. My name's Stephanie Liedem. I'm the project manager for the Potomac Hill Campus Master Plan for GSA. I'm joined today by some of my colleagues. As you all know, Mina Wright, the director of our office and commission member, Nancy Witherell, also our regional historic preservation officer at GSA, as well as some of my colleagues from Department of State, David Grossweiler, the project manager, and Bob Sanders, the federal preservation officer. As well, we have some of our consultant team from the local office of Louis Berger here. We have Goody Clancy Berger, joint venture, the Goody Clancy portion of that is up in Boston, but joined today by Tim Canaan and Jed Narzavich, who are co-project managers, and Patty Kuhn, our architectural historian on the project. So as you know, today we're here to just provide background information on the project and process related to the master plan that we're developing for Department of State in anticipation of coming back to the commission in the spring and summer of 2016 for, with the draft EIS and master plan, draft master plan. The Potomac Hill campus is located across Twenty-Third Street northwest from the Harry S Truman Building, Department of State Headquarters. GSA is developing this master plan for the Potomac Hill campus on behalf of Department of State to look at the long-term operational and security needs for the department. The images you see here represent what the site looked like back in the eighteen hundreds when all that existed was the Old Naval Observatory on the site, and then today, the aerial image with the East Street Expressway and the land reclamation project that happened in the late eighteen hundreds that added all the additional square footage of land to the southwest part of the site. Over time, the site was primarily developed by Navy, and I'll talk about some of the other uses and functions that existed on the site from then. In 2012, GSA acquired the site through the BRAC process in order to develop this site for Department of State. In addition to the headquarters, DOS has several leased and owned assets throughout Foggy Bottom and Roslyn, and the site is appropriate for relocating some of those dispersed leased locations into a consolidated headquarters adjacent to Main State. From a security perspective, control of this site outside of the federal government would be a threat to State Department because of the proximity and the position of the campus overlooking Main State. So Potomac Hill is just one piece of a long-term housing strategy to improve the operational and security management and as well as inefficiencies and leases for Department of State. Department of State has already occupied Navy Hill since 1987 after CIA left to move its headquarters to Langley and began renovations to some of the buildings on Potomac Hill portion of the site when Navy left in 2012. So a master plan, Section 106, environmental impact statement, transportation management plan are currently underway to guide this redevelopment. I'll orient you again with a little more detail to the site. Potomac Annex, the portion to the east part of the campus, as it's sort of historically been known, has Buildings One, Two, Three, Four, and Five, as well as three Navy flag officers quarters, quarters A, B, and C, which will remain under the control of Navy and are outside of the scope of the work. Buildings Six and Seven to the south edge of the site were transferred to USIP at the same time that GSA took control of the campus. Navy Hill on the western portion of the site has the central, east, and south buildings. The Old Naval Observatory Building Two is sort of central on the Potomac Annex portion of the site. It's the national historic landmark built in eighteen forty-four, excuse me. Buildings One, Three, Four, and Five on Potomac Annex were built between 1908 and 1911 at the same time as quarters A, B, and C, which will remain under Navy control. The buildings on Navy Hill were completed in the nineteen twenties and thirties with another building to the north edge of that portion of the campus, the North Building, which was demolished with the introduction of the East Street Expressway in the nineteen sixties. The historic entrance to the site was originally oriented to East Street with steps coming up to the North Building and also an LA of trees at Maury Circle that were on access with the Old Naval Observatory. When the North Building of Navy Hill was demolished to bring in the East Street Expressway, the orientation and access to the campus switched to Twenty-Third Street adjacent to the Truman Building. So part of why we're here is to lay the groundwork for the upcoming draft EIS and master plan submissions. Understanding the site is quite challenging from a PowerPoint presentation. Until you walk the campus and really get a sense for the lay of the land, so to speak, and understand the challenges that we've been presented with in planning and looking at potential development and opportunities on this site, you really don't get a very clear understanding of how that, what the challenges are and constraints are on the site until you go out there. And I think probably we should look at in the future, between today's presentation and when we come back with the master plan, conducting a site tour with the commission to get you all out on the site and kind of understand more intimately what it's like to work on that site and deal with the constraints. The site is very dynamic. There are significant topographical challenges and existing building conditions that make it an interesting design problem. It was a high prom, it's a high promontory, selected by the Navy as a good military site for defense, and also for that reason, a good location for the original Old Naval Observatory. There are significant elevation changes between, I'm going to go back one slide, between Potomac Annex and Navy Hill along the line where you see that red dash line, there's a large retaining wall which cuts the site into east and west halves by about a forty-foot elevation change, sloping from the north end of the site to the south end of the site. There's also a similar retaining wall along Twenty-Third Street, which sort of supports the Potomac Annex side of the site up, so when you walk by along Twenty-Third Street, the site is sort of up above, above you. There's a consistent architectural character on Potomac Annex and the colonial revival style buildings around the Old Naval Observatory, and then Navy Hill has a very distinct architectural character with neoclassical style buildings ranging from the twenties and thirties. There are also historic landscapes and trees. Two of the oldest oak trees in the city are on the campus and will be protected and preserved throughout the planning process. Maury Circle and the LA of trees that served as a forecourt to the national historic landmark will also be restored in this process, as well as the Old Naval Observatory marks the original American prime meridian on the site, which is aligned with Buildings Three and Four as well. There are important views to and from the site that are also significant, and I will cover those in more detail later. So to give you an image of some of the buildings that exist on the campus, the top three, the east, south, and central building are the buildings on Navy Hill. Central Building, which was completed in the nineteen twenties, really served as a background building to the North Building, so it never had its own facade, but it is the North Building facing what is an existing courtyard on the Navy Hill side. The east and south buildings were built in the nineteen thirties of a consistent architectural style. The east building is significant for Wild Bill Donovan's office during World War II, and the OSS Society has had great interest in the consultation process in protecting and bringing the status of that building to our attention. On the bottom of the slide, the buildings from Potomac Annex, the Building Two, the national historic landmark, Navy Quarters A and Building Three. Building Three and Building Four are very consistent architectural style, almost look like they were constructed as a pair. All of the buildings on Potomac Annex were done by Ernest Flag, who was a naval architect and also did a lot of work in Annapolis. The sighting of some of these buildings is challenging in itself. They sort of are set on a sloping hill, and so the relationships and the adjacencies between them is challenging in planning and looking for where new development might occur. These are some of the site views to and from the site. You can see over to the Arlington House at Arlington National Cemetery. You can see Potomac Hill off in the distance crossing Arlington Memorial Bridge, as well as viewing the Lincoln during the fall and winter is easier to see, and if you're standing on the Lincoln Memorial looking back to the site on a winter day, you can see. The site is best viewed from the Teddy Roosevelt Bridge, although that bridge is outside of the period of significance for the project. And then Maury Circle and Navy Hill Courtyard will become integral parts of planning and creating a campus identity over time as we plan this site. So some of the early site history, Potomac Hill, you'll see here in the far west portion of the plan of Washington, DC in seventeen ninety-two was the highest point in the La Enfant Plan. Jefferson thought it would be a good idea to locate the President's House here. The Navy saw it as a great fortification and opportunity to place the Naval Observatory in eighteen forty-two. Since this plan, of course, we've got the land reclamation project in the late eighteen hundreds that reclaimed a lot of the land of the west of the mall and south of the, south and west of the site that make it what it is today. So to go over some of the site chronology and development of the site over time, the Old Naval Observatory from eighteen forty-four to eighteen ninety-three was the only building on the site, and then in eighteen ninety-three is when it moved to the new location of Mass Avenue. Eighteen ninety-four to nineteen forty-two was home to the Naval Museum of Hygiene, Hospital, and Medical School on the Potomac Annex portion of the site and the Hygienic Labs and NIH on the Navy Hill side. From nineteen forty-three to twenty-twelve, the Navy Bureau of Medicine and Surgery occupied Potomac Annex before we obtained the site through BRAC and State Department moved on to the site. Office of Strategic Services, the predecessor to the CIA, was on the Navy Hill portion of the site from nineteen forty-one to nineteen forty-five, and then the CIA from nineteen forty-six till sixty-one. forty-six till sixty-one until they moved their headquarters to Langley, although some components of the CIA remained on the campus until nineteen eighty-six. And then State Department occupied the Navy Hill portion of the site from nineteen eighty-seven. I'm going to be moving more into the master planning portion of the work that we're doing here. We have been, we are about two years into a three-year contract. We procured Goody Clancy Berger in January of twenty fourteen through the Divine Excellence Program to master plan the site and lead the Section 106 and NEPA process. We have been working with consulting parties for about the last eighteen months and have just gotten to a point where we've refined alternatives and are moving into a draft environmental impact stage phase. We've been consulting with, including some but not all, NCPC, CFA, SHIPO, NPS, ACHP, USIP, Kennedy Center, DDOT, DCPL, the Navy, Committee of a Hundred, ANC2A, West End Citizens Association, the National Trust, and the OSS Society. As I mentioned, the site presents significant challenges, and we had developed at the beginning of the project, planning principles or planning considerations that we're looking at resolving as we go through this process. Early on in the planning process, we made a commitment to design to the site, and we have kept that as a primary goal, as we negotiate the planning process between Department of State's programmatic goals, consulting parties, and the physical planning. While we continue to have consultation with stakeholders and are committed to resolving several of the planning goals to create a master plan that resolves the needs of several different stakeholders. So some of the planning considerations that we've been dealing with in this planning process are creating cohesive campus that has an identity and sense of place for State Department and the nature of the diplomacy work that they do. Preserving and are adapting the historic and cultural resources, including historic landscapes. Improving the environment, reducing impervious paving on the site by creating landscapes and locating parking below grade. Improving operational efficiency and relationships to HST and access issues. Streamlining access circulation and creating a secure campus for Department of State. Addressing the connection to the city, the surrounding region, and maintaining views to and from the site and adhering to prior agreements with USIP and Navy. So we've given a lot of attention to where to locate new development and what the best opportunities are for the site for use by DOS while being cognizant of the historic resources on the site. I'm going to walk through the various alternatives that we've come to today. The no-action alternative presents essentially what we see on the site today. There are approximately one hundred and sixty-one thousand usable square footage and two hundred and seventy-eight thousand gross square feet on the site. The no-action alternative maintains all buildings one, two, three, four, five, central, east, and south, with renovations that are in progress to one, three, four, and five for DOS operations to continue today. Over sixty percent of the site has impervious pavement, and building two, the National Historic Landmark, is in a state of, I don't want to call it disrepair, but it's beginning to fail, and there's some concern that without being able to proceed with the planning process that there could be demolition by neglect if we're not able to do work on the National Historic Landmark. So each of the following three alternatives involves some level of demolition in order to achieve the programmatic goals for Department of State and maintain a sense of scale for development that is appropriate for the campus. Through consultation and peer review, we have determined that the northwest and southeast corners are the most appropriate locations for new development on the site with below-grade parking structure. In each alternative, we are adding approximately two hundred and ten thousand usable square feet above and beyond any buildings that are demolished. So if thirty thousand square feet are demolished, then we would be adding two hundred and forty thousand usable square feet. In alternative A, there are approximately three hundred and seventy-five thousand usable square feet and six hundred and three thousand gross square feet. Total approximate staff of two thousand in all alternatives with approximately four hundred parking spaces. Alternative A includes the demolition of Central Building and Building Four. It preserves use and aligns the open space with the access of the American prime meridian. It creates a scale and context consistent with the existing massing on the site and preserves the context around the National Historic Landmark.
How many staff did you say?
Approximately two thousand. Two thousand. Thank you. In alternative B, we're at approximately three hundred and seventy-three thousand usable square foot with six hundred and one thousand gross square feet, and this involves the demolition of Central Building and a portion of Building Four, the central portion, in order to insert a new building at a more efficient utilization rate. There's also the addition of a pavilion building in the southeast corner for addressing formal pedestrian connections to Department's Main State and create an entrance to enter the site and screen visitors that also addresses the grade change when you come into the site at that corner. This also places, because we only take down a portion of Building Four, places a larger building on the Navy Hill side of the site and encloses the courtyard. Developmental alternative C shows what can be done if slightly more demolition occurs through removing the central, south, and Building Four. We get a lower massing overall, but there's more significant new development around all edges of the site. There's approximately three hundred and seventy-one thousand usable square feet, five hundred and eighty-seven thousand gross square feet. This encloses the courtyard on Navy Hill, but also blocks some of the views out from the upper portion of the Potomac Annex. So this is a snapshot of all of the alternatives together with the no-action alternative. In general, across all of the alternatives, there are some commonalities. There's approximately three hundred and seventy thousand usable square feet on all alternatives with between five hundred and eighty-seven and six hundred thousand gross square feet. All of the alternatives preserve the National Historic Landmark and immediate context surrounding the Old Naval Observatory. The adaptive reuse of eligible buildings meets the program and purpose and need of the Department of State. We create a cohesive campus that is connected to HST through improved pedestrian access and entry pavilions. Maximize office space and amenities, increase public access, and protect and improve landscapes and trees by reducing hardscape and locating parking below grade. So I'm going to skip through this alternatives commonality slide. Just to give you an update on our schedule, we have just started working on the draft environmental impact statement and anticipate working with your staff in the spring of twenty sixteen on that and coming back in the summer of twenty sixteen with a draft master plan. Record of decision in winter of twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, and completion of the project in early twenty seventeen. So with that, if there are any questions or comments?
A few questions. For context, was it, regardless of the scenario, is it going to be about two thousand new employees or is that just for A and B is more, C is more?
It's give or take, maybe a hundred, but it depends on how much demolition of existing historic fabric because the new building is slightly more efficient in terms of housing strategies, but it's generally around two thousand.
Okay. Also for context purposes, what exactly, departments' functions and such, what exactly is being relocated? What Department of State functions? Presumably, there's some critical element to it being in close proximity to the Truman Building and such? Can you?
I'm going to ask my Department of State colleagues to answer program questions.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's David Grossweller. I'm with Department of State. We're still trying to match up what leases expire with the available opportunities from what the development alternatives would have, but generally, we're trying to look at people that are in leases, things that we don't have control over. How would they move into the site and how do they coordinate with the headquarters functions that take place at Main State and then also the regional bureaus at Main State? So to answer your question, we haven't identified specific organizations within the State Department that would move. I think some of it comes down to what are the footprints of the buildings that we can develop as the alternatives and how do those organizations fit in there? So some may not be a good fit because they're bigger than what the footprint of the building that we're proposing.
And the other issue here that Stephanie touched on is that the topography of the site is so severe from east to west that even co-location on the campus can be negated or mitigated in some ways by the drop. It makes it almost impossible to, I mean, under, we looked at lots of scenarios that would bridge the drop architecturally, but it, so if you're on the, if you're on the northwest side of the campus, co-location on that campus with somebody, an office in the new building, let's say, if one of the schemes occurs with the, with a new building in the southeast corner of the campus, you might as well be in Siberia. The point is that, given the different footprints and whatever, what new development happens, we've been, we've been working with State and it's, the co-location factor is not as, it's not an urgent, it's not a question of urgency. It's really, the co-location consideration, I would think, eventually is going to be, take a backseat to the amount of development or be determined by the amount of development that we can, we can get on the campus while still respecting its historic fabric. And then, I'm assuming that some mobile strategies will be used in, you know, once we land on a square footage, that they can then make some determinations that have more to do with their larger portfolio.
And that kind of leads to another question, which is, I noted in brief introductory comments, this is a pretty historical place, and you've got about a hundred, timeline-wise, you've got about a hundred and seventy-five years of hilltop history, and you've got a kind of multifaceted, multi-pronged goals of operational efficiencies and relocation, co-location, expansion, all of that. How to marry up and appropriately achieve your operational efficiencies while also respecting the, protecting the history of this tight campus?
If I could use an example of the renovation of Building One, that was completed about a year ago, if, based on its historic character, there was a certain amount of office space that we could rehabilitate, and from that, we found a tenant that turned out to be the Historian's Office as part of the Public Affairs Bureau, and they were an ideal candidate based on what the building could accommodate and what their particular needs were. I think we had such a large pool of possible tenants that we could look at what the building could be and then find the most appropriate tenant for it, and I kind of feel that's how this will go as well, in that when we, as part of the development alternative process, say this is how big the footprint is, how many stories we can accommodate, then we'll in a way be able to pick and choose from multiple possible tenants and say what's the best fit. They all probably will have a co-location benefit, some maybe more than others, but a lot of it will come down to who, whose characteristics fit best in the structure that we can accommodate on the site. And I think that's part of, at least our take is to, we're trying to respect the history, the character of the site rather than trying to say, we have an organization that's this big and it's got to fit.
I was just about to compliment our colleagues at the State Department because this is not always the case. More often, the case is that, you know, you make these people fit, and we don't care what you have to do to make that happen. The State Department, we're giving you a little bit of a gelatinous answer because it's a work in progress, yeah, as all master plans are, but also because the State Department has been a very good development partner and they are looking at the site, they will accommodate the site instead of the site being expected to accommodate them, which is to be noted.
So we have three ID units that create badges for employees, and one of the things that's come up as part of the pavilion that Ms. Leadham talked about at the entrance of Twenty-Third Street is that it provides us an opportunity to try to consolidate those three operations into one. We think that would be more efficient, and that didn't really come up until the pavilion was shown on the plan, and then people started discussing what would be the best use of that square footage. And so we actually are doing a little bit of internal discussions about, is that a good location for it? And we just wouldn't have thought about that until the alternatives were on paper and then tried to brainstorm how it can be best used.
Perhaps the biggest takeaway is Ms. Wright has complimented you, so you may want to take that.
Take it in mind.
Thank you.
I just had a follow-up question because I'm fascinated by that give and take and that the goal of having a campus as a unified entity, what are some of your other strategies as you work through the process that you can do that? Because it is a challenging site and it's so prominent, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, one of the biggest challenges.
For physical design.
Sure. One of the biggest challenges we're having is really bridging, as I mentioned, this sort of significant change in grade between Potomac Annex and Navy Hill and using sort of the southwest corner, as I just sort of am highlighting on here, and how to bridge across that divide through, you know, an architectural insertion there, whether there's some sort of green bridge that takes the plain of the upper campus on Potomac Annex into an existing, you know, south building and/or a new building on that corner, depending on the alternative you're looking at. But that's a significant challenge in terms of, you know, connecting these two halves and just the walking distances and the elevation changes. So that's, we're part of the pavilion building, as David mentioned, on the southeast corner, is bringing visitors or staff into the site and making the connection between HST. And then again, sort of on the other portion, you know, what is there, another physical bridge or connection that can be made that'll be worked out more in the architectural piece of this project?
The other problem is scale. The scale of the eastern parcel is much smaller. It's been compared to, it's been likened to a village by a lot of our consulting parties and the scale in order to get the development that we need to make it at least feasible economically. We, we've looked at a lot of alternatives that also ended up in our attempts to preserve the village. It made it look like a fortified village with the new development wrapped totally around it and at a scale that was inappropriate.
And the structure and all these drawings.
Yeah. And then you also have the retaining wall which surrounds that, the curve on the west, and that's got to be, I don't know, sixty feet, maybe? So it's, we don't have a lot of room around the edges to play with. In fact, we have zero. So it's, it has, it's a challenge, yes.
I'm curious, what are some of the reactions you're getting? I mean, particularly from the Kennedy Center. I would love to know their reaction. We spent so much time looking at the, you know, the extension plans, and you have such an interesting relationship to the Kennedy Center and this spot, so.
Yeah, the Kennedy Center's been okay. We actually have not been a very vocal consulting party in this, in this process, but they have been at the table at the meetings.
Could I add on to that a bit with a question? Because I actually noted with great interest the master planning considerations of connections, and I think you even slipped into the local district and city around it, but all of these plans that I'm seeing in terms of alternatives are reinforcing that village or that campus and seems to be closing it off more and more. Where are the considerations to connecting into a larger fabric or future fabric that might be actually put back that was removed in some of these alternatives?
Yeah, that's a very good question. You know, early on, we considered looking at what might happen if, you know, new street grid came back in, you know, a long time from now, but back into this neighborhood, and would we be interested in looking at buildings that actually did reinforce East Street or sort of more of a grid pattern? A lot of the connections that are happening here are reinforcing the relationship back to HST as well, you know, on the southwest corner or southeast corner with the C Street connection and the death differences across the street, as well as on the north end, and I and I didn't really call out, but changes to the north entrance for pedestrians that are coming from Metro and might be working on this site. So it's, it's some of that, as well as this entry pavilion sort of cutting back the retaining wall on the southern portion of the site on 23rd Street as you approach the site to sort of reduce that overall distance if you were walking from Metro down 23rd.
You'll remember too, that when we looked at the Kennedy Center, I tried to raise this as a point with the, with the expansion of the Kennedy Center and that, that the investment of $100 million, private or public, foreclosed, you know, for the foreseeable future, any idea that we would ever eradicate the traffic spaghetti that, 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 that occupies the space between our western edge and their eastern edge? And so with that, those, that set of decisions made, we pretty much started looking at, well, 100 million bucks and 60 feet, that's an awful lot of obstacle to be trying to think through, at least in terms of western connections to the river.
Do you think the Kennedy Center plan that currently is going forward precludes an, a, a connection across any sort of info?
I think, as I noted at the time, that it, it, it doesn't preclude, but it certainly delays and, and discourages. I'm not, but let me be clear, it's not on, it's not on, it's not on the Kennedy Center to make this happen either, but, but with, with each incremental closure, if you will, of opportunity, I, I think it's here to stay. So we have to, we had to be realistic and acknowledge the immediate needs for the State Department, the immediate conditions, and at least the vision of our, our neighbor, which is they are very much inclined out to the river. And, and at the time, we did discuss, when Ellen was sitting in Eric's chair, she had some similar concerns, but that was then and is it now.
It would be certainly a different plan if the Kennedy Center's original expansion plans had come to some level of fruition.
Yes.
With the re-establishment of East Street and the development over the, the spaghetti, if you will, over 66 where it crosses between you.
I'm sorry, Mr. May.
If, if I may continue, yeah. So the, I remember seeing some earlier iterations of what might happen here and what the massing was, and it's reassuring to see that it's been a bit more restrained. So I know that the, the overall massing or maybe square footage of building has shrunk since then. I only saw images, so I don't know what the relative square footage was, but how much did it actually shrink from where, where you started?
Significantly. Yeah. Yeah, a few hundred. We heard pretty loud and clear from our consulting parties, I think the original estimates were in the 850s, some of the initial planning studies that we did, so.
Eight, eight hundred fifty square feet as opposed to now you're down in the neighborhood of 600?
Probably 600.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it was, it's, it was, I'm glad that it has changed and I'm glad that your, your development partner, the State Department, has been working to accommodate the site rather than the other way around. We know, we've seen enough of the other way around, I think, so this is great and I think that's commendable.
Some of, some of the concerns were more so about the height, less about the square footage, but about the height and blocking of views from significant portions of the site and buildings and views into the site.
Yeah. I mean, you know, the buildings that are, that are shown in, in your massing diagrams are certainly of the right scale in terms of building heights and cornice lines and things like that. You know, the massing of the buildings, and we build fatter buildings nowadays than they did back then, generally speaking. So if you look at it in plan, they seem kind of out of scale, but I think the way you would perceive them on the ground, they're probably closer to a comfortable fit.
Yes, and that's been a significant challenge. If you look at the East Building here, which is the smallest building on the site, it's 16,000 gross square feet. It's two stories. It's a minute little building and there's some danger in sort of placing larger buildings around that and making it this kind of jewel, you know, on the site, but it's, it's caused great challenges in, in the massing and the floor plates of these buildings to get, get floor plates that are operational and efficient for State Department functions today.
Right.
And if you, if you, you know, it's interesting to look at the site, these buildings do look large compared to what's existing, but if you pull out to a city scale and you see HST and USIP and Kennedy Center and Columbia Plaza, the scale of the buildings is, you know, these look minute.
Right. Well, and of course, we, and we never perceive them as you would from, from space. And I think you actually have some advantage in that it is, when you get to that point of that particular section of the campus, that it's, it actually is inwardly focused rather than outwardly focused. Because if you were seeing these buildings from all sides, you'd appreciate how big and bulky they are, whereas if you see them in the context of a courtyard, you know, they're providing a, you know, the, the faces of the outdoor room rather than objects in a landscape. So I think that, that helps you. Now, my last thing I saw in this from our staff was that Alternative B might be a, a leading contender, at least in the 106 discussions. Is that still the case? Or is it too early to say anything about what might be a leading contender?
I think it's too early to say. We've just started the draft D I S and are evaluating and analyzing the alternatives, so.
Okay. Do you, do you plan on identifying a preferred alternative in the, in the draft?
At the end of the draft, yes.
We will, but I think the, part of the vexing problem on this site is that when it comes down to real decision-making, some of the buildings have to go. And each of the historic buildings has a constituency.
Mm-hmm.
And, I, I, interesting, I mean, we've thought, for example, as far as OPDQ is concerned, the, the Central Building, which is the northernmost building on the west side of the campus, was, was a sure bet for demolition. And, and, and our, and, and in our hierarchy of, of redevelopment, it, it, we could stand to lose that and should actually because it's, the integrity of the building is long ago compromised, et cetera, and had a companion piece. And then out of the blue, it, 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 it has its fans.
Right.
So that will, we'll see how, how the stakeholders line up behind each building that we're looking at to demolish and when the alternatives are fully vetted. And it ma, it may change.
So the, I mean, I assume when you say it has its fans, it's, it's from the historical role of the building as opposed to the architecture of the building?
Well, surprisingly enough, there are some people who are rather fond of it architecturally.
So, and, and is this, did I hear correctly that all these buildings were designed by Ernest Flag?
No.
The buildings on Potomac Annex, 1, 1, 3, 4, 5, were done by Flag.
And so the Central Building was designed by somebody else?
Nancy Dear.
I don't know.
Just somebody else. That's okay.
And it was, it was a back, sort of a background building to that original north building that was then demolished.
Right.
It even has sort of a, it used to have a bridge connection on the north side and that, that as well has been demolished. There's sort of a pair of doors on the second floor that are just leading to nowhere.
Okay. I was trying to, not having walked around the campus and not really knowing the architecture, I was just curious about that. I have done work on Ernest Flag buildings before and there are different sort of periods, if you will, in this design. They're, I mean, they have a very different kind of look to them, so. It's, anyway. The, the last question I have is, the, the development that you're imagining with 2,000 employees, is that generally consistent with what GSA has been advocating for of late in terms of, you know, building efficiency and square footage per person and so forth? I mean, I hesitate to call them standards, but I know that, that the trend is downward and I'm wondering if this is generally consistent with that downward trend?
Yes, it is, although we're recognizing that in the historic buildings, there is a different utilization rate than what would be in new, new construction.
Understandably.
So it's a aggregate total.
Okay. Thank you.
Troy, then Ms. White.
I just had a follow-up question. I mean, in addition to the, and I appreciate, you know, what you were saying about constituents for different buildings, whether it's for history or architecture, but is there an underlying philosophy or principle that you're trying to adhere to with respect to the historic resources? I mean, what is the driving principle?
Well, the problem, I mean, not the problem. The challenge is that there are, there are buildings on the site that, I mean, there's a hierarchy of, there's a lot of history there, but because there's, because the history has, because the site has been occupied by different, at different, during different eras and by different constituencies who all think the site is important to their history, whether it's the CIA or OSS, come CIA, the NIH, medical, military, medical history, et cetera. We've got, so we have historic integrity and then, but architecturally, for, for a site, as, to say nothing of the, of the Observatory, which is an NHL, but for a site that, that has been, that has such a pedigree, it sure has been neglected over the years. I mean, what was the, what's the percentage of, of impervious surface?
It's almost 60%.
Something nuts. I mean, if we don't do anything on this site because we can't get, at one point, we were very discouraged and thought we'd never get to a, a solution. And, and we were all thinking, at least at GSA, what a, what a shame that would be if only to, because it's a chance to green it up. There's a lot of asphalt. And, and the, the existence of the, of the residences, it makes it even more challenging because they're kind of stuck in the middle too. So we have to respect that people live there and will continue to live there. So there's, the, I, your question is, is, was there an overarching philosophy?
Or a, or an underlying principle that you're trying to, how do you sort all that out?
Well, that's, it is a struggle because, because we're trying to be respectful of the history and the architecture. There's some, there is, there are some buildings whose integrity is intact and, and, and they're lovely buildings, but they're not, even, even the south building is only, I don't know, how many square feet?
Stephanie? About 30,000.
I mean, it's, it's the, sort of the image that everyone thinks of when they drive, when they approach the city, you cross the bridge and you see, that's the building that you really, that is visible, just to the east of the Peace Institute. But it's, it's not very efficient. And architecturally, it has some charm, but is it worth foregoing the opportunity to really make something, to preserve, protect, and enhance this site for the long haul? So one of the historic buildings, at least one has to go in order to make it efficient enough for the State Department to do anything but a building-by-building, you know, rehab job, which is fine, I guess, but, but we should do better than fine, right?
Yeah. In, on Navy Hill, Central, East, and South, none of those buildings are on the same plane. So you enter those buildings at, you know, varying elevations, 10 feet difference stepping up that site. You know, we, as I said earlier, we've been talking about designing to the site and letting the site drive the development, but it's, it certainly has its challenges.
Sure. I kind of followed up on the question as to goal. Sounds to me that you're trying to do something to increase the efficiency, add space, but do it within the historical context. Is that correct or is that not what you, you need more space, but you want to be efficient? Is that, yeah?
Yes. Well, I mean, we need to get as much square footage out of the site to accommodate the State Department, not make it a waste of taxpayer dollars.
Right, okay.
But we also have to recognize that this is an extraordinarily important and visible site in the city.
Yeah, okay.
So it's a, it's, it's been a, this is where the Section 106 process makes your hair turn gray, but it's worth doing.
Okay.
Even if you didn't have to do it, you should do it because the, the communal input that we've gotten has been helpful in sorting out a very knotty problem.
Ms. Liedem, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sensing no further items to come before the commission, I think we are adjourned.